Thank you. Ms. Cruz, could we have a roll call? Roll call of who's present?
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasn't here.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Honchel.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here. I'd like to start by welcoming our new council members, Craig Honchel and Wendy Hughes, and also our new city clerk, Wanda Cruz. She's been very busy since we had quite a long agenda for our very first work session and meeting. First thing we'll do is have a citizen input session. You get three minutes to speak, and I'll call people in order. The first one is Don Senate of 22 Brittany Lane.
Hi, gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the work they did on the STR regulations. I also would encourage the council to permanently table what you have listed as unfinished business, since we already have a regulation in place that seems adequate. Next, I'd like to address a bigger issue. Through all the discussion of the STRs, the issue of septic seem to be a continuing threat. It's as if we have a ticking, toying bomb of septic in our community that will eventually threaten our groundwater, the cleanliness of our streams and lakes, and the health of our neighborhoods. I would like to encourage the council to create a working group, perhaps chaired by Councilman Fowler, although I didn't ask him about this, with the express purpose of creating an ordinance to regulate the maintenance and inspection of septic systems throughout the community of Belavista. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Oscar Hanson of 9 Park Ridge Drive.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, and the mayor for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to express a concern about the ordinance for taking it from President Sanders' family to a C2, like commercial district, and on the vision rezoning of number 2222-46586. I walked that property today. I live facing that property in question. That property line does not stop at the wooded area. It goes into that wooded area approximately 15 feet. Also, I'd like to also recognize and state that with our homes facing that rezoning area that's being asked to be rezoned, for six months out of the year, there will be no leaves on trees, no shrubbery to protect us from the lights from anything that's a commercial district. That is a concern to us for our privacy. We bought our homes there, realizing that that property across from us was zoned as residential, and it was to be residential. Now, it's being asked to go to a C2. We have no idea what's going to be put in there. I hope the council does, but we don't. I mean, that's why we're objecting and really criticizing this decision to do that. And we really sincerely hope that you'll consider that in your decision to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Becky Van Meter of 18 Park Ridge Drive.
This is my very first meeting, and here I am to speak to you, and I promise to be very present. Thank you to the -- like I said, it's my first time, so I'm looking forward to other meetings as well, so I can learn more about how this works. I'm here about the same issues that the former person just said about the selling of that property and turning it into commercial, C2, I believe it's C2. And I have, actually, I know that the guys from Cooper didn't get to speak last time, so I'm going to give them an opportunity to speak, because I have questions for them. And that's where I'll start. What will Cooper do to ensure the privacy and safety of the impacted homeowners?
May we need to direct the conversation?
Oh, okay. I was hoping that he would -- I would hope he has an opportunity to answer that question. And the safety is about the construction when they are going to be constructing, and then the parking lot and the lighting. And I was wondering if there'd be a safety personnel, especially at night. Will Cooper maintain ownership of the property adjacent to Park Ridge Drive? There would be some comfort with a known entity if they're going to hang on to it. What is the plan for the trees that currently shelter homeowners' property? Because there's always demolition of trees when there's something like this going on. And what is the plan for the trees that are adjacent to the cemetery? The cemetery is a sacred place, and we certainly don't want to take away any privacy from that. Where will the signee be located if the C2 zoning request is approved? I'd be interested in knowing that, because I'm right next door to it. And the last thing that I have to say is a lack of detailed information has created much speculation and uncertainty among the homeowners. Please consider sharing at least high-level details about intentions for the property. May he chose the Park Ridge development as they return the home and are falling in love with the community. The Cooper family founders would be pleased with your kindness. That's it.
Thank you.
Camera two.
Next speaker is -- I'm having trouble reading this name. First initial M, last name Win, at 5 Buckingham Drive.
Mark Morris at 5 Buckingham. I apologize, I was in my strong suit, so. I'm here tonight to discuss a little bit about Resolution Q. There was some conversation last week in the road session that was brought up by Jared discussing about conflict interest. I believe this is a conflict interest by appointing M. Deloy. And the reason is she's a current real estate broker and a workforce consultant. She has access to buyers and sellers, builders, plans, all kinds of stuff. So, the planning commission's responsibilities are large-scale developments, incidental subdivisions, plats. You can see where I'm going with this. I feel that any real estate agent or builder, what have you, should be in this position at all. Just in mere sense of their privacy. So, that's how I feel about it. I think having someone in that position, they can be compromised very easily to show developments for properties. I'm not saying she should do that, but people get in situations. I think you should reconsider that position. Somebody else will keep it thinking. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Tom Judson from 36 Kentire Lane.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the P.O.A. We have four rezoning requests in front of you, all of them to C1. We're trying to match the historical use of all four of those properties with the correct zoning. Unfortunately, you're going to see a lot of me over the next several months, because we found 20 different parcels that were zoned incorrectly way back when the city was created. So, our intent is to just get it, all those parcels, to match the historical usage of those properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mark Huber of number 7 Park Ridge.
Hi. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for allowing us to speak. My wife and I lived at number 7 Park Ridge. Owned that property for about nine years, and my wife could give you the exact dates. I can't. Prior to moving to Belavista, I served on city council for 10 years. I understand the importance of trusting your city's committees and their commissioners. They are your boots on the ground. They've spent a great deal of time and effort speaking to the residents of Highland Park Village. We are the only community directly affected by the rezoning at Lancashire and Buxton. They evaluated the wants and the needs of the city. They took into consideration our changing demographics and the need for additional housing. They made a determination that the city would be best served in the future if the parcel in question remained as it was first zoned, and that it was zoned residential. I urge you, and we urge you, not to impede, void, or negate their hard work and deny this current appeal of their decision. Thank you for your time and your service to our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Parsons of 29 Duval Lane.
I am Jim Parsons, and I'm chairman of the Belavista Patriots and live on Lake Avalon. And as you know, the Architectural Control Committee has ordered us to take our white fences down. And we feel like that that is unreasonable. It's arbitrary, and it's capricious. And we want to fight that. We just feel like that what the heck is wrong with a white fence? There are white fences all around the world. We'd be the only city, probably in the world, that don't have white fences and have a ban on it. So, I went to the Attorney General, and she said that there are no laws that she could hang her hat on to make an opinion. So, I went to the Benton County Circuit Court, and Judge Scott said that there are no laws regulating a 501(c)(4) like ACC, and they can pretty well do whatever they want. And they can fine you and charge you fees and sell permits to you, and they can raise the price any way they want to, and you have no recourse. You have no way to do anything about it. So, the Belavista Patriots are going to rent a bus, and we're going to, next month, go to the city council governmental affairs committee, and we're going to try to lobby to have some laws so that these entities will have something to hang their hat on. And this is what we did in 2005. It got you your job. And where you are right now is what we did in the Patriots loading a bus and lobbied the legislature to make it possible for Belavista to become a city. We are a city now, and we have city ordinances, and that should take care of anything that the people want, not what Cooper wants. I thank you for your service and things you do, and appreciate your letting us speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Waters of 4 Brighton Lane.
I'd like to thank the city council and the members for hearing me tonight. My topic is rezoning, which is number 2022-46586, and which is off of the cemetery. And I request that since the world has changed since this original plan was done, how that was going to be zoned, future planning, I request that we table any rezoning till the future plan can be reviewed, and anything that's planned for that zoning can be shared at a high level with the community. And we have an open forum so they can hear what you're really planning for. So, at this point, there's a lot of people upset because they don't know. I think if you would open that up, it might make things a lot easier for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gene Grossclose of Cooper Community.
Good evening. I'm Gene Grossclose. I represent Cooper Community. I don't have a lot to add to the appeal. The appeal speaks for itself. I'm sure all of you reviewed it. I would like to reiterate that this is an appeal, and it is a new hearing, not based upon a planning committee vote, whether it's for or against. And we just are attempting, at this point, to bring our zoning in line with the comprehensive plan. I know that when planning, when Taylor with planning presents her information to you, you can clearly see that it's merely bringing this piece of property within the comprehensive plan the council's already passed. I know there's a lot of concern by the neighbors as far as the development of the property. Again, this is not concerning the development. This hearing is not. It's simply bringing us in line with the comprehensive plan. The development process will have an entirely new process where community input and community concerns can be when there is a specific plan for the development. At this point in time, there is not a specific plan for development, merely attempting to bring it in line with the comprehensive plan. So, we ask that you consider this carefully. We do ask for approval of this rezone, and appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roberta Garilain of 19 Park Ridge Drive. Apologize if I got that last name wrong.
You were close.
Yeah, thank you all for hearing me. I just have one point I would like to raise in terms of the rezoning for the area that we've all been discussing. One of the things a lot of people don't realize, they'll say there's a big ravine there, lots of trees, you can't see anything. Well, that's true, except if you live on Park Ridge, you realize the ravine starts up here on the other side, and more down here. So, any traffic, any lights shine directly down into your homes and into your bedrooms. Or at least, that's where the car lights that go by. So, it's a real concern to us that the amount of traffic that would come down that road in the evening. If you have a business that stops at 5:00, it's not quite a problem. But if you have apartment houses or something else, then we've got a real issue for our area and noise just travels across that ravine. I would like to compliment Cooper on the foresight to develop 150 Homeowners Association. There isn't any such thing as that anywhere. And it's really, really nice. And for the city to have that as a model, you need to protect it. People love that area. They see what it's like. They see what it is for the elderly. And like I said, I think you all should be proud of it. And I thank Cooper for coming up with that design and model. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Beverly. I can't make up the last name of 12 Park Ridge.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Beverly Collups, and I've lived at 12 Park Ridge Drive since 2014. And as Robert said, there are 157 homes in Highland Park Homeowners Association, 35 of which are on Park Ridge. Currently, 67 widows reside in our community, with eight residing on Park Ridge. I am one of the eight. We make up 42% ownership of the homes. If you ask people why they chose this location, they will tell you ease of living as we age and reality that eventually the one left behind will be left in a safe and secure place. Rezoning to C2, which covers a wide spectrum with no knowledge of what is planned, is a huge threat to our security. I ask you, the council, if your quality of life and your home's values were in this situation, to think about how you would respond. Cooper Communities, who once found the home at 1 Park Ridge a mere location for their model home, now wants to rezon the back of 1, 3, and 5 Park Ridge to an unknown entity. What we do know is any commercial entity comes with parking lots, back doors, parked cars, traffic in and out, people hanging out, dumpsters emptied in the wee hours, overhead lighting invading the homes all night, and an unknown element coming into our community, possibly threatening the safety of our elderly. What do you think this does to the possibility of selling our homes and our property values? Once rezoned, there will be no problem to rezon the rest of the property down to the Belavista Cemetery, and how it might interfere with its historical civil war section, not to mention those who find peace and solitude in visiting their loved ones who have pets. Cooper Humanities rebuttals says the parcel is protected from nearby residential areas by a large timberland buffer. In the last two meetings we have attended, there has been a dispute. First, the 500 feet off of the property line at house number one to 250 feet. Last meeting, when challenged, it was down to 150 or 125 feet. We had the right to know exactly. Walking lot number one, I believe you will see that all the trees on the two acres will need to be removed, which comes to the ravine, as Roberta had mentioned. And yes, there are trees at the bottom, but they do not come up high enough to block any vision of a commercial building from their backyard or inside their home. I encourage you to walk the property and ask yourself if there are accusations that residents were misleading or lacked basis in fact is true. There is a continuing interest in making Belavista a destination location with an emphasis on a safe place to live and enjoy the outdoors.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up. Sorry. Thank you very much. Next person is Larry Kelly of Howler Lane.
Good evening. So, I've been at a number of city council meetings recently, and I wasn't able to make the work session last time. And I'll admit that I haven't had time to look at the recording of that, but someone was telling me that a conversation sprung up about eliminating public comment. No? Was that incorrect? And that concerned me. So, I'm going to go ahead and talk about it. That concerned me, because I mean, as we're seeing right here, that's an important part of communication from the people that are electing the officials in government. So, I think that's important. I would hate it if that ever happened, because I'd understood that it is something that other municipalities don't necessarily allow or have a provision for. But I would really hate that to happen in Belavista, because I think it's the public square. This is where we come to dissent, to share our opinions. Thank you, Mr. Wilms. This is where we get an opportunity to share those things. And so, as the public square, I think we should have the opportunity to do so, unimpeded. And so, please, don't consider that. I hope it doesn't get any lax. Thanks.
The next speaker is Timothy Ainge of 5 Park Ridge Drive.
Meeting Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having us. I assume that everybody has looked, read, reviewed the appeal from CCI Industries to the council. And it's really based, it was said that it has nothing to do with the planning commission. But if you read it, it does have something to do with the planning commission. It starts out that Cooper, in their appeals, state that the planning commission denial is arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. I think it's fair to ask, what is unreasonable about Enovo? What is capricious about Enovo? What is arbitrary about Enovo? Nothing. And I find the use of the word "capricious" interesting. The definition of that is capricious gives to sudden and unacceptable changes in mood, behavior. None of that is exhibited at the planning commission meeting I attended. That is far from true. So, I think, or I wonder, if Cooper Industries is trying to buffalo by any commission, as well as maybe the city council. So, I encourage you to read and study that appeal that they sent to you, because I think there's a lot of innuendos in there that are not true. I, for one, am not eager to have a commercial building 30 or 50 feet from my back property. And I don't think any one of you are either, because you don't know what it's going to bring. It's the uncertainties of what's there. So, I ask you to please consider voting no on this in light of the citizens of Belavista, in light of the people who support you and expect you in turn to support us. We can't do advise. It's up to you. But I found some things in that appeal that it's like poor old Cooper. And I don't like people saying that, well, something was mis-zoned from the beginning. What's that? What's mis-zoned from the beginning? It really probably constitutes nothing. There wasn't any choices made. Nevertheless, I please ask you to consider this thoughtfully, considerately, not just for you, but for the citizens that live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Winter of 1 Park Ridge Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Larry Winter, 1 Park Ridge Drive. I am the closest one to the possible rezoning area. First off, Tim covered the arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. And if I was on the planning commission, I would be very angry. Secondly, Cooper did have representatives at that meeting. Now, in terms of the amount of forest protection, I have a picture showing the back of my home, number one, and number three, King's Home. Surveyors put pins or stakes at the corners of their property as they survey it. This picture shows a pin, and what I consider This picture shows a pin and what I consider a stake at the end of the P H O A property. And I measured that today at thirty-one feet. And I request that you vote no and support the planning commission. I'll pass the question.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the point of the meeting for council member reply. Someone replied in here all day.
I'd like to thank everyone speaking tonight, Mr. Kelly, just for verification. Discussion was about removing or continuing or not council reply to public comment. So public comment, my mind will never leave the discussion that we should have council reply or not, and I could all feedback about it, and it's been really great to learn what the public wants. Also, I will be available after the meeting if they want to talk and exchange information at seven meeting time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're set then on council reply. Action on the minutes. Are these the minutes from December nineteen, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting? Does anybody have any corrections, or if not, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
That was Councilman Fowler, Councilman Will. All in favor of voting?
Mayor, will you call the votes? And so one thing I just, I haven't said it just for benefit of everyone, I think it would be helpful, and actually it's according to the rules, to restate the question and then call for the votes. So as the chair said, the question is on the adoption of minutes. It's called roll.
Sorry. The question is on the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting, December nineteen, twenty twenty-two.
Councilmember council? Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. To no?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed six to zero. Next item is financial reports. The November financials were sent to the council members under separate cover. The financial reports are available on the city's website, and I believe we put a few copies there if anyone's interested. This is for the time period ending. I just wanna make a couple observations about it. For the time period ending November thirty, twenty twenty-two, compared to the prior year, the general fund operating revenues were up a million dollars. The city tax was up thirteen percent. Property taxes up fourteen point nine percent. So the city's in excellent financial shape and has a very good reserve of funds. So we feel like we're in strong shape right now, and purposely have been playing it conservative, and I give the prior mayor, Peter Christie, kudos for that, because of the danger of a recession in the upcoming year. Majority economists seem to believe there'd be a recession this year, and we feel like we're in good shape to weather it if it should curve. Next item on the agenda is election of a mayor pro tempore.
Mayor, if I could just, we have a little bit different procedure, and so I'll just remind the council of the rule on this, we talked about it before, send an email to you, but just for the benefit of everyone. The count, this is from your rule. The city council shall at the time of organizing a public session, elect one of its members as mayor pro tempore. Any council member may nominate himself or any other member of the city council for mayor pro tempore, and no second of a nomination is required. Each city council, each city, excuse, each council member shall vote by naming his choice by voice vote if there is more than one nominated for a position. A majority vote of the city council shall be required for election. So you can nominate yourself or another person, no second is required. If we get more than one, then we'll have a vote by name.
Larry?
Would make a motion to nominate Doug Fowler as senior.
Okay.
Motion to nominate myself as mayor pro tempore.
Any other nominations? Okay, I think we can proceed to the roll call vote.
So he responds, lead to Fowler or Hughes.
Council, Council council? Wills?
Well, Mr. Fowler.
Hughes? Hughes? Fowler?
Fowler.
Wasniak?
Fowler.
No.
I will for Miss Hughes.
Four for Fowler and two for Hughes.
Okay, so Mr. Fowler is elected mayor pro tempore. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
So the motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Miss Hughes.
Roll call vote? No?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Okay, on unfinished business, an ordinance regulating short-term rentals to provide a requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental, provide for a maximum number of short-term rental permits to be issued, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. And this was tabled from the October meeting. In light of the fact that we had passed another ordinance on this matter, I'd like to see a motion to table it indefinitely. That's motion by Mr. Wills, second by Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Council?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. On our ordinance number B, under unfinished business, regulating short-term rentals to provide the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental, to provide for a maximum number of short-term rental permits to be issued, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, to provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. This was also tabled from the October meeting, so I think it would be prudent to have a motion to, I table it indefinitely.
Don't move. Second.
That was a motion by Wasniak, and a second by Mr. Fowler.
Council? Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. No?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Okay, under new business, number C, an ordinance setting the amount of additional fine to be levied pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated sixteen sixteen dash seventeen dash one twenty-nine to defray the cost of incarcerating city prisoners and for other purposes.
Mayor, I can answer any questions about this. We spoke about this at the work session. Chief Graves is here. This increases what is collected from violators from fifteen to twenty dollars as a jail fee. We use that money, it can only be used to defray the costs that we pay to the county to house prisoners. So that's what this is for, this is as most as it can be by state statute, it's still not gonna meet our expense according to Chief Graves, who I believe is here somewhere, I think I saw him, I'm sure he can give more specifics for you, but that's what this is about.
Mr. Wills?
I have a question, how do we levy that against a particular individual?
I'll get into that. So we make good guilty or found guilty, the judge levies it against them, but the other costs and times.
So it determines the number of days by?
No. Now, each person, for each offense, they're just paying that fee, whether they're going to jail or not. This is collected from every person.
So it only pays twenty dollars?
Per charge.
Okay.
Per charge. And then that money, even though that person may not be going to jail, we had collected on speeding, every offense that we had over here, speeding and stop signs and headlights and everything. And so then, so they pay that, and we put all that in a fund, and that's used to defray the cost of prisoners that are arrested by the sheriff, by the police department that have to be taken to the jail.
So it's not an overnight fee that we can charge? This is a?
No, what you pay, what the city pays to incarcerate prisoners is an entirely different agreement and amount, and that's an agreement that the city has with the sheriff's office. And so this is a collection mechanism to recoup funds. It's not directly related to what we pay, because we're already not paying, we're not, we can't collect enough to reimburse us that for all the costs.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
That's out of order, because this is first reading, so there would need to be a motion to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading, if you wish to report.
I'll make a motion to second, no, third and final.
Can you get your three shape ready? Thank you.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, a second by Ray Council. So this would be a vote to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mayor, we need to go ahead and read the time again, that'll be perfect.
Okay. Setting the amount of additional fine to be levied pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated sixteen dash seventeen dash one twenty-nine to defray the cost of incarcerating city prisoners and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, sent in by Mr. Wasniak. Okay, roll call vote.
Council and council?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next matter is ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen regarding the regulation of short-term rentals to remove the requirement that an address of the property owner and local point of contact be posted inside the short-term rental.
Motion to the third and final?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Go to the third and final.
And then go to the third and final.
Second.
That was a motion by Miss Hughes, and a second by Doug Fowler.
Council, Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Fowler?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Period six to zero. I'm gonna read the third and final now. Amending ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen regarding the regulation of short-term rentals to remove the requirement that an address of the property owner and local point of contact be posted inside the short-term rental.
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Doug Fowler, a second by Mr. Wasniak.
Council, no?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle for use by the police department. Chief, for the audience's benefit, might be good if you spoke on this for a minute.
Sure. Normally, every year in the past, the state would go out to bid, the state bid contract for police vehicles, for all state vehicles that the state was gonna purchase. Since COVID and supply chain issues, the state's no longer getting a state bid for police vehicles specifically. So I'm asking for a bid waiver to purchase this police Tahoe. It's not, we're gonna use Superior Automotive because they have a supply of them. Police vehicles aren't like normal vehicles, they come with some pre-wiring in them, what the police likely, some other normal vehicles will come with. Dealerships have to order these vehicles now six, eight months in advance. Superior took an order from us that we weren't held to legally, because they knew, because it had to be approved by council, but they asked how many vehicles I bought out of need, they purchased them ahead of time. So to go out to bid for a vehicle would be worthless, because nobody would have it, it's upper Superior Automotive inside of its brakes. So I'm asking for a bid waiver to purchase this vehicle this time. It's still a very good price, they give us about a five thousand, about five thousand five hundred dollar discount as a city compared to what a normal public would even start.
And I assume we may wanna go to the third and final on this also?
I would like that, so we can.
Make a motion to move to the third and final. Suspend the rules.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, and a second by Ray Council.
Council? Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Council?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. That was the motion, go to the third and final, now I'll read the third and final. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle for use by the police department.
Right, Mayor? Ma'am, before we move to the vote, I'd just like the audience to note that in the action, maybe this is council too, that all these agenda items, we covered off, we talked about it in a work session in detail. So a lot of this would just be reiteration if we did, so it's kinda like watching paint dry right now, I know. And also, just as a secondary point, these purchases are all approved in the city budget for twenty twenty-three prior, so we've already, not only did we talk about it last week, we talked about it during the budgeting process also, so just as an FYI. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, and a second by the, Jim Wasniak.
Council, Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes. Council?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
The motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four six nine nine six, county parcel number sixteen dash two six three five four dash zero zero zero, from P one Conservation District to R one Presidential Single Family District, and the staff requests move to the third and final. From P-one Conservation District to R-one Residential Single Family District, and the staff requests, uh, move to the third and final reading. Uh, Taylor here, did you want to, uh, just mention what this property covers?
Uh, okay, so this one's for State Relentless Drive. Um, it's a parcel that is on the east side of the city, it doesn't really have anything new to add in the work session. The applicant, maybe here and I haven't seen her, um, okay, she's here if you ask any further questions for her, but they're requesting R-one Single Family Home. Um, I've got nothing new since the work session, it'd be great if we could do a third and final, since I had no questions at the work session.
Okay.
I'd also worth mentioning that before it discovered that it was, it was owned P-one, the construction of the home is about like ninety percent complete or something like that, so, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, go to the third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler, and second by Mr. Wasniak.
Council, Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'm going to read it for the third and final now. Amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-nine-nine-six, county parcel number sixteen dash two-six-three-five-four dash zero-zero-zero. From P-one Conservation District to R-one Residential Single Family District.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler, and Mr. Wilm.
Council, Fowler?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that passed six zero, next one is ordinance amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in zoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-nine-one-nine, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-oh-one dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. And this is, uh, also the staff has requested third and final reading.
Let me ask a silly question, is this the one that's been, uh, did contrast with the audience tonight, is this the one or not? This is probably. No. Okay, all right.
This is Scott's Go-Club House.
Correct.
That's Scott's Go-Club House.
Motion to, uh, motion to move to the third and final.
Okay. Uh, motion by Mr. Wilm, and the second by Craig Hansel.
Council, Wilm?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero, so I'm going to read it for the third and final. Amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-nine-one-nine, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-oh-one dash oh-oh-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve. Second.
Motion by Craig Hansel, and second by Doug Fowler.
Council, Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Next ordinance is amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-nine-one-seven, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-six-five dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Which one is this, Taylor?
This is Lake Avalon Beach.
Oh, okay, this is Lake Avalon Beach, yeah.
I have a motion to amend. And it was passed, passed out to all of you, and the motion to amend is to remove all references in the title.
Yeah, that's, that's the wrong one, it's the, uh, the one in four. It's to replace with what you've got here.
It's a, it's a revised ordinance before you, along with a revised legal description. At the work session, I spoke about, um, asking to remove, uh, the lands outside the roadway, opposite the beach area, um, and use those as, as, uh, if you will, fringe areas for the adjacent residential properties as a buffer. And so, uh, the motion here is adding section two, which refers to a revised exhibit A. Exhibit A is the legal description for the property being rezoned, uh, which includes the Avalon Beach area, uh, but less and except that portion lying north of the center line of Lancaster Drive. Most zoning runs along the center line of a road or highway, and so that's the reference here, and so that all of the area north of Lancaster and west of Lancaster, as it goes out to Camden, uh, would be not rezoned, it would remain as it is today, uh, as P-one. That's the motion to amend.
Okay.
Move to, uh, can we, can we, some conversation first?
There needs to be a second.
Yeah.
Need a second, okay.
Second.
Okay, so it's a motion by Larry Wilm, and the second by Ms. Hughes.
Now you can have debate on the motion, on the amendment.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, no, so, uh, Councilman Wilm, I, I, you know, respect your opinion, uh, you know, on this, I, but I did, I, when you brought it up at the work session, you know, I made sure to drive over and look at it really closely, and I, I just don't really think it's necessary. I looked at the land in question, uh, you know, the land that borders, uh, what is that, Camden Road? I mean, I don't, I don't see how anything, I mean, something could be built there, but I just don't see why it would, it's kind of a wasteland. And then, uh, the land on the north side, uh, all along Lancaster, you know, there's a big ravine there behind the home, and then it kind of goes back at an angle and then dips back down, you know, almost, you know, to where it comes down parallel, coming down from the north. And I, I don't know that, now, let me ask you this question, does, uh, is a resurvey of this land required, does it cost the person to?
It's not required based on the legal description, correct?
That's fine, I, but I just don't think it's necessary personally, so, um, and that's just my opinion, I just don't think the land is really going to be developed at any point in the future.
Yes.
In the areas of the portions outside of Lancaster, Jason, and on Mykene Drive, uh, are fairly, fairly substantial in acres. Obviously, if you look at it, probably one to two acres at least a piece, maybe more, uh, and it allows other uses if we rezone it to commercial, uh, that's in the purview of our zoning code. So the property owner could come in and request a use consistent with the district code that it would be zoned, and the planning commission would need to address that and actually would have to approve it in some form. Granted, that may require screening or other things to be done as a part of that development, but I'm thinking that appropriately, this would be best left undisturbed from its current character in the interest of the property owners adjacent.
Okay, if there's no one else, I think we can go ahead and vote, the vote would be on the proposed amendment by Mr. Wilm to accept the property north of Lancaster Drive.
Council, Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
No.
Wilm?
Yes.
Fowler?
Fowler. Mayor, you may choose to vote in favor if you so desire, you decide.
I choose not to vote.
So that motion will favor. Read it, read it. Still on first reading.
Yeah, uh.
Mr. Mayor, I would offer to move this ahead and go to the third and final in its current form.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and go to the third and final, this is second.
That was Mr. Wilm, and Mr. Fowler. Uh, this is on the vote to go to third and final.
Council, Wilm?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Uh, carried six zero, so I'll read it for the third and final. Amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-nine-one-seven, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-six-five dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Hansel, and, uh, second by Doug Fowler.
Council, Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried six to zero. Uh, next ordinance is amending the Belvista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty twenty-two dash four-six-five-eight-six, county parcel number sixteen dash four-oh-two-three-four dash zero-zero-one, from R-one Residential Single Family District to C-two like Commercial District.
On this one, I would offer an amendment, Mr. Mayor, that we amend this ordinance to remove all references in the title and in section one of the proposed ordinance. That's made to C-two like Commercial District and replace it with C-one Neighborhood Commercial District.
The vote for that, of rezoning, where they live.
Really being is to reduce any potential impact of development on the abutting residential area. I think that in, in, uh, in preparation of our zoning map way back in about two thousand and eleven or fourteen, I'm not sure what exactly it was done, uh, there were a lot of things that were not fully considered. In keeping with the parcel locations and type, uh, there are subdivisions flats that have outlots in them that we addressed with requests by the developer to rezone them to residential from, uh, existing P-one zoning, or to a commercial classification in some cases. What we have is a situation here where arbitrarily, uh, the R-one zoning was selected for the adjacent vacant land south of the cemetery on Buxton Drive. The C-one zoning provides more restrictions for development than does the C-two category, and I would move in this, uh, move to amend the ordinance as I've specified, uh, for the interest of protecting the property owners there, uh, in providing more control by the city of any development that would occur.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a motion by Mr. Wilm, second by Doug Fowler. Any further discussion?
There's only amendment only at this point.
Right.
Okay, I guess we'll call both.
Okay, Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried six to zero.
Still on first reading, yes.
Mr. County, could you, could you speak to the consideration given to zoning by the city council?
Well, uh, that, that's, that's a lot there, uh, so I have presented, presented you in the past with a memo, and there's, there's a lot of things you can consider when it comes to whether to rezone, compatibility with master plan, uh, you can look at traffic, you can look at lighting, you can look at noise problems, you can look at utility issues, you can look at sound and noise issues. So you can look at all those things, one of the things you can't, one of the things you need to do is look at potential rezoning, and you have the schedule of uses in your code that say if it's C-two, it can be all these things, if it's C-one, it can be all these things. And when it comes time for rezoning, it's not a time to, to really know what specifically could occur, you know that anything in that list could occur, and so you need to look at, at all those uses and make sure that you can, uh, deal with the fact that whatever any of those uses may bring, uh, are not, you know, that meets those criteria that you can look at. So that, I mean, there's, there's, there's more detail to it, and, uh, but those are the sorts of things you look at.
Right, yeah, I just wanted, because I, generally you'll send that memo out, you know, when there's a rezon that could be debatable, right? Uh, what I'd like to do on this one is kind of take a step back from it, uh, so you could, people would have a, an opportunity to review what C-one zoning is versus C-two. Uh, uh, from just a personal standpoint, I'd like people to know that I did go to the property, I did get out of my vehicle, I did walk it, I still have a few scratches from the rambles, you know, from being able to do that. I tried to walk to the back of the property and see where the, uh, you know, the boundary stakes were placed, and I didn't see anyone, I, they may be up closer to the road, but I'd like an opportunity just to review it additionally myself, and, and you know, any resident would like to have a conversation about it, you know, feel free to contact me, and I'll be more than happy to do that. But anyway, I'd like to take a step back and say this is the first reading, and we can still go through two more passes, so.
Anybody else?
I guess. For the public's benefit, any property owner is permitted to submit an application to rezone the property, assuming, assuming that it's not designated for some purpose that can't be rezoned. As an example, a platted lot, residential lot in Belvista is designated as residential, we've, we've chosen to call those R-one zoning, meaning single-family residential sites. Anyone can come in that owns a vacant lot, and they could ask if it's on a corner or it's a busy street, they could say, well, I'd like to rezone that lot to, uh, C-one. And so while it's a valid request, the reality is, is that the covenants restrict the use of the platted residential lots to be resi, single-family only, and that if we were to rezone that, the response to the rezon that, the response to the owner, it would make the lot basically useless in value, because the covenants would not allow commercial development to be put there, even though legally the city could rezon it to C1. But it would be a disservice to the property owners to do that. So you'd have to look at what the covenants say, what's been platted as single-family or otherwise in the city when you take into consideration the addition of rezon. So in this case here, we think that the appropriate usage is commercial along with per our adopted comprehensive plan, in keeping with the residents and their concern about impacts, making it C1 instead of C2 does at least in one step do that, requires additional approval to when this could develop.
Anybody else? Okay.
So the mayor will go on second reading next month?
Yes, okay. Next matter is an ordinance amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46916, county parcel number 16-03464-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and the staff requests move to the third and final on this one also. Taylor, which one is this? What?
This is the one with the problem I was asking for.
Okay. So is there a motion to go to third and final?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, go to the third and final.
There's a second? So that was a motion by Doug Fowler, second by Craig Hunchell.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Snow?
Uh, motion passed six to zero, already the third and final now. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46916, county parcel number 16-03464-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Second.
Which motion by Craig Hunchell, second by Doug Fowler?
Council Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46918, county parcel number 16-43419-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and staff requests third and final rating. Which one is this, Taylor?
This is the Tangerine Golf Range.
Okay.
I'd like a motion to suspend the rules, go to the third and final.
Second.
Motion by Doug Fowler, second by Larry Wills. Motion to go to third and final.
Council Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Wills?
Yes.
And Hunchell?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. I'll now read it to the third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46918, county parcel number 16-43419-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Larry Wills, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is a resolution expressing support and participation of the City of Belavista in the federal advance effective accountable policing and criminal justice practices to enhance public trust and public safety program. And if you recall from the work session, Chief Graves described this as the so-called LSO program that we've been involved in with the federal government, where they give us free equipment from time to time. It exists, equipment that they have. Any discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
For clarification, Chief, I think, I think as you told us at the work session, this will not compromise our ability to obtain surplus equipment at any time or the disposal of that should we find that we don't think that we own it.
No, all this does is just every year with the new executive order, the city council has to affirm their willingness to participate in program. We can discontinue any time as a city. Non-control items, we can dispose of in a year's time if we deem we don't intend to.
So what you're saying is that this will be an annual event this resume?
Yes, as long as this executive order is.
Motion to approve by Mr. Wills. There's a second?
Second.
A second by Jim Wasniak. So this is a vote on a motion to approve of resolution.
Council Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with emergency vehicle specialists pursuant to an HGAC cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of 12 self-contained breathing apparatuses and associated equipment in amount not to exceed $94,770.41 for use by the fire department. So this is the equipment the fire department uses in fighting fires, and it's replacing existing equipment that, as I recall, is quite old, maybe 2001, say 2005 there or something like that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wasniak, second by Mr. Wills.
Council Snow?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Wayne Hagan for a three-year term in position one of the Belavista Board of Construction Appeals commencing January 1, 2023. So Mr. Hagan has been on the board and has expressed a willingness to serve for another three-year term.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Craig Hunchell, and second by Doug Fowler.
Council Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one's a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with reliable Chevrolet of Springfield, Missouri, in the total amount of $45,500 for the purchase of one Chevrolet Silverado 1500 four-by-four work truck for use by the street department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry Snow, and second by Jim Wasniak.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution appointing Wendy Hughes to the Belavista Advertising and Promotion Commission as a council member commissioner in place of John Flynn, who is resigning.
Yeah, so just quickly, typically, the advertising promotion commission would develop a list of prospects, you know, fill an open seat. In this particular case, though, that's not our responsibility. We have seven commission members on the advertising promotion commission, otherwise known as Discover Belavista. Whenever John resigned, we are required to have either a mayor, the mayor and a council member, or two council members. So in this particular case, it's a city council member that's required, and that would come from approval of the city council and not a recommendation of the advertising promotion commission.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. That was motion by Doug Fowler, and that was second by Jim Wasniak.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Linda Lloyd to the Belavista Planning Commission to complete the non-expired term of Craig Hunchell due to his election to the city council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wasniak, second by Larry Wills.
Council Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Motion to approve.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries five to zero with one abstain. Uh, next one's a resolution designating authorized emergency officers and municipal depository board to the city of Belavista for calendar year 2021.
2023.
2023, yeah.
Motion to approve.
My mistake.
Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Wichita Kenworth pursuant to a Sourcewall Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of one new production model dump truck with salt spreader and snowplow equipment in the amount of $254,452.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak, second by Mr. Wills.
I'd only just like to say to everybody, you know, notice that once again, this was through the 2023 budget, you know, so we've already reviewed this as a city council, so there's not, these are not extra expenditures or anything, they're all accounted for.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we had to wait for about 10 months, huh?
Yeah, this is.
A long time ago. Okay, roll call vote.
Council Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. The next resolution is awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract of pinnacle emergency vehicles in amount not to exceed $236,637 for a remount of a 2011 four-by-four cheap XL Bron ambulance for the fire department.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, Chief, could you, does this complete the remount of all of our ambulances now? It completes all the older models. We have one that will be probably in a couple of years that needs to be remounted, so 2017. I think this is about the third one, I think, until you're not counsel. It is. You know, just I'd like to take the opportunity, uh, last Sunday after church, we were going to go to lunch and things, and I, you know, I'm able to go occasionally, but there was a lady there that, you know, recently lost her husband, and she could not say enough good things about our EMS services, and when they had to call, make a call for an ambulance to come out, uh, just meant so much to her. And I just, you know, just recognition of, you know, you, your department, your staff, you know, your EMS members, and I actually had an opportunity to witness them in action. My next-door neighbor had to call an ambulance, and, uh, she called me first, you know, and I went over, but you guys arrived while I was there, and just watching, you know, your, your department handle and manage that situation was really awesome. They had no clue who I was as far as a city council member, I mean, they're not putting on any airs, I mean, why would they anyway, it's an emergency, but I would just, it was just, it's just really great work, you know, that your people do. Well, thank you, Joe, thank you. Mayor, I don't know what we got from the record, a motion or a second on that or not? We need to read the page again.
I have still.
Okay, good.
The mayor didn't announce it, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I got it, I was gonna ask to make sure Wanda did, so glad she did, but, yeah, I'd like to, uh, second what Mr. Snow said. I, when I was campaigning, I heard nothing but good things about the fire department, the ambulance service, and the whole nine yards, I thought it was great, so. So I think we need to have a vote, right?
Right. Council Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Plinett Construction Management, Inc., for construction management services related to the remodeling of the current police station into an extension of the central fire station at Town Center and for other improvements to the facility.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler. Before we vote, I wanted to explain, this is for an upgrade in fire station number one, particularly the first part of it is we're gonna upgrade the living quarters for the firemen in there. It's badly overdue, and once the police exit that building, it'll give us an opportunity to work on fixing it up for them, so that's what this is about. You can go ahead and throw a call. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
This is a budget item in our capital improvement plan for 2023 that's been.
Council Snow?
Yes.
Hunchell?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
It's all right.
I'm still sure about that one.
This people the same wave all the time. Hi. Yeah, it's gonna be, my understanding is it's gonna be gradual during the months of January and February. Police chief is asking, he was asking when you'd be exiting the building.
So our IT departments this week, starting to get Wi-Fi everything up and running, and that's gonna take about three weeks, and so there's no use us getting in there prior to then, but the move-in process will really start near the end of the month, and in the first three weeks, we've got to work fully within.
Thank you.
Looked like they were moving furniture in today. Yeah, so furniture, well, the furniture was delivered, because that was by contract, it was delivered like a month ago, it's been sitting in the training area, and as rooms get.
And as rooms get ready and punch listed, they are unloading furniture. So that, the new furniture has been delivered. It's being set up as rooms are punch listed.
Okay, thank you. Next resolution is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a ninth amended animal services contract for animal sheltering services with Belavista Animal Shelter, Inc.
Motion to approve. Second.
That's Mr. Wasniak, is that, or Mr. Hansel? I was gonna explain, this is an amendment changing the amount the city gives the animal shelter from $4,000 a month to $5,000 a month. And we also give them stipends for every dog and cat that they come and go. I think that's what the mom said. So I have a throw call vote.
Because in recognition of the animal shelter, they do a lot of programs to try and help funding themselves with different fundraising processes. So it's not only the contract with the city that they earn their money to pursue other activities that the shelter proceeds with.
Yes, they do quite a bit of fundraising, so they work really hard with that. Go ahead with the roll call.
Council Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilm?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Resolution carries six to zero. Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 21. It's moved to Tuesday because of President's Day. Next city council regular meeting is 6:30 PM Monday, February 27. Planning Commission work session is at 4:30 PM Thursday, February 2. And planning commission regular meeting, 4:30 PM on Tuesday, February 13. So if there's nothing else? Oh, Board of Construction Appeals is at 3 PM Tuesday, February 14, if necessary, in Belavista District Court. So if there's no, the announcement is adjourned. I'd like to thank the council for all their hard work and the city clerk. Thank you very much.